I want to.
Yeah, I'm going back.
Midline with a question mark, can you guess?
Yeah, I counted one.
Okay.
Okay.
There's only two.
You ready? Are you ready? Okay. It's all right, please. Call the special meeting of Dodge County Commission to follow speed order. Friday, October the 3rd, 2014, at 2:00 PM, we'll have a moment of silent prayer. Immediately following that, Mr. Williams will lead us in the pledge to our flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Have a folding chair. Would you like to sign in? Everybody needs to sign in, please. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I called a special meeting because of a letter that I have received from Dodge County Emergency Squad, from the Dodge County Ambulance Authority. I'll read the letter. I've got a lot of questions that need answering. We have a public comment. And I'm sure that most of the questions will be answered in public comment. And I advise everybody to keep people's names out of this. I feel that there's a lot of tension. And with all respect to everybody, do not mention anybody's names. Try to keep this meeting as orderly as possible. Okay, this is a commission meeting. I remind you that we're going to stay in compliance and we're going to stay under control. Thank you. Dodge County Emergency Squad Incorporated, Dodge County Ritchie 911 Center. For May 30th, 2012, there was a mutual aid agreement between Dodge County Ambulance Authority and Dodge County Emergency Squad Incorporated. The Dodge County Ambulance Authority following under bulletin number nine, which states, "This agreement may be terminated by either party if each party sends written notice 30 days prior to the termination of the agreement." We are hereby terminating our mutual aid agreement with your agency. This termination between our agencies will take place 30 days from the date of this letter, at which point in time Ritchie County Ambulance Authority, Harrison County EMS, will become the DCAA's primary second due. We thank you for the time we held the agreement together. If you have any questions regarding this decision, you can visit me at my office located in Smithburg or call me at any point in time. Thanks. Cole Crim. Okay. We will start off with public comment. You each have five minutes. There's four people who signed up to speak. The first one is Tammy Beamer.
I'm really concerned over the fact that we have the Dodge County Emergency Squad sitting here in the county. And...
Sorry, Tammy.
I'm sorry. I'm concerned over Harrison County and Ritchie County being pulled into Dodge County. Not only does it delay response for the people that needed here, but it also drains the other counties' response to their own emergencies. Dodge County people don't pay taxes in Ritchie and Harrison County. And those people have the right to be certified their own squads if they aren't paying taxes for it. We have an ambulance service down here, a second one, that should be able to go out and to respond as soon as due.
Thank you. Betty Stipple, you're next.
Hi. Thank you. I want to ask a question about an incident that happened in front of my residence on 9/16. There was a bus wreck and a car. When I got out to the vehicle, as I said, it was a loaded bus. I was under the understanding that EMS and the AA both were coming. Much to my regard, after I checked into it, the AA was not available. So therefore, they toned out for Ritchie County, not Dodge County, who was also in the county. I had a busload of kids, had no idea how many injuries I had. It was scary to me, it was scary to the kids, and it was scary to the other driver. My opinion, it's not fair to take the system out of the county as far as Ritchie County and Harrison County. What are you going to do if Ritchie County is not available? If Harrison County is not available, like they're not now, they're sending runs to Anmore, they're sending runs to Dodge County, just because they don't have enough crew. So if you get a massive wreck or a massive incident out in the county, we're going to be stuck. And somebody's going to die, somebody's going to get hurt. And if it's my family or anybody that I'm related to, God help this county, because I will take it. I mean, I'm sorry, but I think it's pathetic. We have two ambulance services here, and we cannot get together, and we cannot cooperate. It's silly. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well. Well, I can't answer your question, very sorry. Mr. Crim wants to... Says if you have questions, he's very welcome to do so.
Well, they are headed that investigation, so do what?
I can tell you the question if you want.
You need to come to the microphone.
The question, the bus wreck, we did town Ritchie County. Granted, it should have been next due, because the 30-day termination was not up yet. The leading of the termination of the mutual aid agreement isn't stemming from that. It took Ritchie County 23 minutes from the time they were toned to get on scene to your house, to the bus wreck. It took our units that were coming in, which they were all off-duty coming in for the 8 o'clock shift, because we only had one truck from 9:00 PM till 8:00 AM the next morning. They all responded, they heard it, and most of them were Ritchie County AA employees, plus the one that was coming for Parkerburg. Then they went in route, and they were on scene at 24 minutes after 7:00. Our trucks were on scene. To the incident, all refusals were signed. The driver was not hurt. He stated he didn't even want to see any EMS agent. He was fine, he was worried about the kids, as was everybody. The reason the kids were prolonged on scene is because we were waiting for another bus to come and transport them back to the middle school, because with the bus wreck and underage, they have to have parents' refusals signed. We have 911 where they made two attempts to contact the bus garage. First time, nobody answered the phone, then finally the bus come, and they were transported back to the middle school. At that time, one of my guys, or four of my guys at one point, all stayed with the students until every last refusal was signed by the parents. And, you know, things do happen, I understand. But the reason for the termination of the mutual aid contract is events leading prior to that call. Yes, that was a bad call, and it could have been much worse than what it was. But that's every day of the week, you know. At any time, somebody can wreck, and, you know, we all pray that there's as many peoples or can be covered at that time. That's what happened at that time. And if the termination is leading to the mutual aid termination, whenever that question comes up, we can answer it too, if it's needed to be answered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Candy, Moen.
Yes, sir, I just have one thing to address. Since the county commission can't decide over this AA and EMS stuff, which we need to play, when you call 911, you have an emergency. You don't have time to say, "Oh, I want EMS," or "I want 911," or "AA." You want, who can get here the fastest? Since it seems to be the AA is just costing us more and more money, and the EMS isn't costing us anything, you guys haven't even set a budget down for the AA. Then why don't you put it on the ballot and let the people vote? And end this. Put it on the ballot and let them vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Mon.
First off, I think it's great you guys are having this meeting. I would like to say that I agree with everyone else that talked prior to me. The situation with the ambulance authority and the emergency squad is past a point. It's a joke, and it's putting people in this county at risk. I personally agree with the lady that just spoke. If somebody is in a horrific situation and they need help right away, they need help right away. I don't want to have to wait 24 minutes when someone's potentially 10 minutes away from me and they're available. There are parts of this county that it takes a heck of a long time to get to. The situation with the school bus, we are confronted with so much heavy truck traffic on our two-lane roads. And I know there's supposed to be a situation where those trucks are not supposed to be on the roads when the school buses are running. But it's not being enforced. They're out there. On my road alone, there have been numerous vehicle accidents in reference to the oil and gas trucks. Okay? So the other situation we have in the county because of the extensive drilling that's going on, the potential for an industrial accident, a pipeline blow-up. We've already had the situations on the gas well pads. You know, we need people close by. And if our tax dollars are paying for the ambulance authority and our tax dollars, I'm not sure how it works with the emergency squad. But it's about time that, you know, if you guys are making a decision, make it. It's been stretching on for months and months and months. And ever since the ambulance authority was put in place, it seems like there's been contention, there hasn't been a working relationship. And for whatever reason, I mean, it just seems like get it together and work in the best interest of the residents of this county. Their people's lives are at risk. And I agree with the lady that just spoke. Put it out on the ballot, let the people in the county decide. Because decisions aren't being made. You know, put it out so that the public can make the decision. Because it is our money that's paying for part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public comment. Okay. I guess my question to somebody in the other ambulance authority, whoever can answer it for me, is, why did you send this letter? And if you don't want to speak in public? Not using anybody's name?
No name. The reason for the termination of the mutual aid contract, it's been a year... Oh, I think I pushed that. It's been a year to a year and a half in the making. DCAA and DCMS have worked good together. We've called. We've always called when we're short. They've called when they were short. There's never been a problem. But there are instances, which you guys can ask the sheriff's office, they're all here prepared to talk to one, is what led to the investigation for the termination of it. When we get on scene, we request trucks. There's been times they brought us trucks that have had nothing on them for us to work with that patient. We have reports and incidences where one truck had no oxygen, no stethoscope or anything, so my truck had to supply that to the bariatric truck, and then our crew had to follow with that truck, instead of wasting time of taking all the equipment off of our truck to put it on that truck. There's an incident that happened the other night, which I can't speak to. We just received letters from the Dodge County Sheriff's Office, West Union PD, to investigate, and we did a little bit of the investigation. We returned it over to the medical director and the state medical director. They're handling that investigation. There is an open investigation. We can't talk about it. But you can ask the sheriff's office, they're more than happy to talk about what they had a problem with. And the reason for the termination is, we were getting help. And everybody needs help. But we were getting trucks that had nothing on them sometimes, not saying nothing, but the things that we need. They would call for a paramedic, we would come, their truck would be there. We'd have to transfer all of our ALS supplies over. When, like, if you get a Ritchie County truck that comes to you, if our BLS truck calls for a Ritchie County medic, they jump on our truck, all our stuff's on there. All they have to do is go to work. But it was just incidences like that that have led to the investigation to go ahead and terminate the mutual aid contract. If there's any questions, I'll answer them. Yes, ma'am.
Does your board... How have they... Did they make this decision, or did...
It is in the director's job description. He can do that. He can make that call without the board's approval. But he does have the board's approval with the letter.
Did you make the call, or did he?
He made the call.
I made the call.
Yes, sir.
I'm a taxpayer here in the county.
Yes, sir.
This all started because we weren't providing adequate service many years ago.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're spending my tax dollars. But yet I have no decision or say that you refuse to use Dodge GMS as a backup in our county.
The Dodge County Commission has that say, and our board has that say. The reason we were terminating it is we're protecting ourselves, along with the commission, because if something happens, if we call for a mutual aid, which we have signed, no matter what company it is, we take responsibility to do, because they're covering our call. So if you guys decide to take legal action, it trickles all the way down to the individual county commissioners, from the company that took the call to the company that requested the mutual aid for that call, which would be us, and then it just trickles on through. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir. We're looking out for the best interest of the citizens here, too. We run all the calls. We are very busy.
Yes, you say that. But what makes your opinion better than the people in the county?
My opinion is no better than the citizens in this county. I'm here to protect the citizens in this county. When you call 911, we get our trucks out within three minutes of the time of dispatch, yes, because of budget cuts. We have scaled down to one crew at night. Sometimes it's busy, sometimes it's not. And we get it out. But I'm not helping you if I call a truck for mutual aid, no matter where it comes from, and it doesn't have the equipment to save your life. So then you're still going to have to wait for another truck to come.
And is this something, you know, it's like you're talking about this other one, you weren't sure of everything. You call Ritchie County, it's 23 minutes. I mean, there's a lot of lag time there.
I understand that. There's a lot of inaccessible places.
Are you better off being in a truck, being all towards the hospital, or sitting there waiting?
I agree. It was just our decision to get you the most certified care. Yes.
That's my point.
Yes, ma'am.
You said it took a year and a half of situations where vehicles that were responding to your request did not have equipment on it. What I do not understand is, why would you let something like that occur for a year and a half? Why did you not work with them?
We have made phone calls. Some of them have went unanswered. Some of them, we went to their director or the personnel directly, and it was made a statement that, "It doesn't surprise me out of that crew." When we have made complaints to that person, that statement was also made in front of the sheriff of the county when he asked about it. It's, we have made the attempt to try to fix it. We have no problems working together. We have. There's a medic right here. I've worked many calls with him. We have no problems working together. I don't care what color his shirt is, I don't care what his shirt says. When I ask for help, I'm glad it's there. But we're here for the county, and that's what we're trying to do, is to protect the county. Granted, response times, they're difficult anywhere. In this county, with the traffic, like you said, the wheel-well traffic, it can take us 20 minutes to get from here to West Union, depending on the water laws. If they move, if they don't move.
Well, I would think in a situation like that, an ambulance would definitely have priority over water trucks.
I agree 100%. We've made the place the sheriff's office before. We have flaggers that try to stop us when we're going on emergency calls. We have trucks, they have problems too. We've had this discussion with them, we've talked stories about it. They don't move for us.
I have one other question. The incidents that you're talking about, do you have all that documented with the supplies?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that available for public review?
No, ma'am. It's a HIPAA violation with patients' demographics on it.
You can't wipe out the patients' demographics?
With the county commission's approval and our board's rule, that's something that goes through legal. We don't handle that. We take the complaints, we log them on, we've made contact with them to try to fix them. That's all we can do. We can't give out the information of what was happening.
Well, I'm just wondering if somebody from the Dodge County Emergency Squad has an answer to this particular question? Because right now, we're just hearing your version of it.
Anybody come up here? Amanda, I'm just here answering questions. I'm not trying to put anybody down. I love working with them. We sat out there three or four hours the other night, talked to them. We have no problems working together. We're just trying to fix it for the best of the county. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, where are the written complaints that you have made so that the board of the Dodge County Emergency Squad can address the issues and get them taken care of?
I have them all, of our side of it. I have them all in our personnel file, the people's personnel files, along with the run-seats.
Did you submit them to the Dodge County Emergency Squad?
I did handle that one, it was the director, and the director before us handled that.
Were they submitted in writing to the Dodge County Emergency Squad?
But they do contain our patients' information, so I...
Did you give them to the Dodge County Emergency Squad?
I have attempted to work through this problem.
But there's nothing written that went to their boards?
No, not to their board.
Okay. How can you expect the problem to be taken care of if they're not given the board? The responsible parties can't take care of it.
I have attempted to contact the director. I've called down there with these complaints, and no one will return my phone. I've told them when we filed the termination agreement, if they would like to work through these problems and continue to act as a mutual aid, they need to come talk to us so we can work through these problems. That is my direct...
That's not in writing though, anyway, right?
I can put it in writing if you would like.
Sticks to the fact.
Is this the correct standard operating procedure that's used in the past for application of mutual aid agreements? Or is this just something that... I've never seen just a letter going out. Always before we work from boards, to board, to board, to... It's always been a board thing, not just fire letter off sending one organization to the other. I've never seen that work before. I don't know how that works.
I've never in my life had to do away with a mutual aid agreement. I mean, but there are drastic measures.
I think we've worked through several problems down at 911 Center, but it's always been, in the past, the fire rescue board, or the fire department board, or the squad board, or with the 911 board. I think John verified that, that everything's changed down there. It was always done with a letter to John from one board to another, but I've never seen one just fired out.
Well, it's in his job description to do that.
You can't write.
I'm not saying it was handled 100% correctly, and we can work, we told them, we want to work with them. We have no problem with it. They just have some things to fix that is just going unanswered and ignored.
I have never got a phone call from you, Cole. I've been into my office, and I return every phone call that's there, that comes in. They put it on a note, put it on my desk, and I always return it. And I have never seen a thing from you.
I can only speak from what I've done.
Mike, would you guys like to talk to...
I will.
And help us with why this investigation is terminated? Can he?
Wait a minute. We're getting a little bit carried away here. We're getting off the issue. Okay, first of all, I got a question. I don't want to deny anybody the right to speak. I'm not concerned with what happened out there. That's none of our business, okay? I don't think that's any of the public's business, what happened out there. That's the EMS's business. My question is, you made a statement that your board directors okayed you to send a letter to the Dodge County Emergency Squad.
No, sir. I didn't say that. I said...
What did you say?
I said it's in his job description to do that.
Okay.
And then he has talked to the board since then.
Okay.
And they were all agreeing with it.
Okay, so my question is, now, you guys have been operating with an illegal board for how long? And you've been told you have been.
That's, can I stop? That's above my category. That's a board or...
Now, I did not hear from you when you was talking.
Yes, sir.
Did I?
No, sir.
Okay. My question is, you've been operating with an illegal board for how long? I don't care how long, but you've been told you've been operating illegally. Okay, now, you also said with the approval of your board and the county commission. Now, has this ever come before the county commission, Mrs. Williams?
What came before the commission?
Terminating the mutual aid agreement.
I never stated the commission said it was okay. I just said our board and my director.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you, everything that you've done here is illegal, and I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting. We're spinning our wheelchairs. We're spinning them round and around. Yes, sir.
Shouldn't counsel be considered on this?
Counsel, I've spoken with counsel before. I have spoken.
But you've just made a legal calling that I think maybe needs to be voiced by legal counsel. I mean, you've just, you've just made a call that... What's your basis for the call? In legal terms?
That's my question, as a reporter.
I know for a fact that they have four people on the board. They're supposed to have five or more. Okay? They have been told, they have been needing more people. Have they done it? A question has been brought up, and they're going to put somebody on there as soon as they find somebody suitable. Okay? Now, that's what I got. I made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Because that had anything to do with the decision?
That has a lot to do with it. You can't make decisions when you are operating illegally. You can't.
But he said code was authorized.
How can a board authorize them when they're not legal?
We are legal.
We are legal.
We have five members.
No, you don't. You have the base on it.
Greg Robinson is a member of our board.
As of the other evening, maybe.
No, he has always been a non-voting member of our board.
He cannot sit on your board and sit on the commission. He cannot vote on your board and vote on his commission.
I consulted with the board of directors, I consulted with the medical director, I consulted with the commission. The decision was ultimately mine. I did not ask permission from anybody. I also consulted with the 911 center before I made a decision. So the decision solely lies on me.
Did you consult with the commission? One person on the commission?
Two.
Okay, does that person have that right? One person on the commission? No.
I do. I consulted.
I made a motion to adjourn. Adjourn.
But I don't see how this would be, because you said they didn't have enough board measures, that why this would make the decision legal? He has the right to make that decision. And with the medical directive.
Well, maybe somebody else can explain.
May I speak a minute?
You can.
I attended the DCAA meetings. This was never brought out in open meeting. They're videotaped. Go watch the videotapes. And if you say that you've spoken to two commissioners, I've sat in the commission meetings. It never came up in the commission meetings.
I consulted with the commission.
But two people cannot make decisions outside of this...
We didn't make a decision. I made a decision.
But the commission is the one who voted to bring it back to the 911 center.
To allow the citizens to determine which agency they want to. They still have that right. You can call 911 and say, "I want DCMS," and they still will tone it.
And what type of legal liability does the commission have whenever Ritchie County and Harrison County and 911 have? Whenever Ritchie County and Harrison County is called bypassing the DC EMS? whenever Ritchie County and Harrison County is called bypassing the DC EMS and they're having to wait 20 and 30 minutes for the people to get there?
To answer your question, I'm going to answer with a question. What kind of liability do I have when they bring me an ambulance with no oxygen to treat that patient?
But did you not get the point a while ago? If you had gone to the people, gone to the board...
I tried.
I don't see a letter.
I didn't try to go with the board.
Okay. I'm going to take one more response and we're adjourned. One more. Go ahead.
On behalf of the EMS, I have never been approached having trucks come to you without supplies on it. No. On behalf of the EMS, we staff two ALS trucks. If you are with a BLS truck and you call for med assist, then yes, you have to bring your med staff on the truck. Three, our trucks have all passed the state inspection. Thank you.
Mike?
One agency, two agencies, doesn't matter to me. The incident, that question, I radioed for medical assistance. What I got that night was a joke. Now, if we want to have two, everybody there should be professionals. That crew that night, with the exception of the driver, was not. My suggestion would be reevaluate your people. Get the right people in there. The county needs it. That night, we didn't have it. And Mary Anna, your question about the trucks and the school board, that is an agreement between them. We cannot enforce that. Cannot. My suggestion for the EMS, the AA, I think you should work together. If you can. If you can, their decision, not mine. But I do think you want to reevaluate your people and get professionals in there, not some Joe Bo off the street.
Is there a criminal investigation ongoing regarding this issue?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you, Mike. Me, your... Thank you, everybody.